Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're gonna have Bradley Jennings and Daniel Jennings leave us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to, uh, I believe this is probably our last meeting of the month. We've had several this month, once again, so hopefully we'll get things taken care of tonight and roll into December on a good note. Uh, approval of agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Neifer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Provo consent agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tackett, second by Ms. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Mr. Odom. We've got visitors. We've got, uh, I believe we've got one visitor tonight. Uh, Nicole Jennings. Ms. Jennings, if you could, try to stay right around three minutes or so. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Jennings. Um, do you need me to state where my address, uh, yes, okay.
Yeah, hold on.
Yes, okay.
This way.
Forty-eleven Betty Forbroke. Um, hello. Not meant for short. Um, first, if you would let me, I would just like to, uh, speak with Mr. Odom for just a second here. Uh, Mr. Odom, I feel like I owe you and the public an apology. Um, we spoke after last meeting, November fifteenth, and I feel like my passions just got ahead of me, and if I was rude or disrespectful to you in any way, I apologize and I just ask for your forgiveness. So, anyway, it's been on my mind. So, thank you. Um, with that said, I did want to follow up from the last meeting, um, which was on November fifteenth, on, uh, two policies that I feel still need some clarification, um, regarding the incident that happened at Barfield. Um, first, I did want to, um, talk about the student handbook and specifically, uh, the, on page nine, number, uh, point number seven, um, it clearly says that students must not bring, and I'm paraphrasing, replicas of dangerous weapons to school or any other school activi- activity or event. Um, replicas of dangerous weapons. I, guys, I mean, I don't know how you explain that other than a toy gun. So, my question to you all is, um, if Barfield had a policy in place, did it ignore its own policy by not enforcing it? I mean, if you're not gonna enforce a policy that it had in its student handbook, then, I mean, why have the policy? I mean, we just might as well just throw it in the trash. Because I, I just, I feel like we need more clarification on that. I think that's, the community is confused about that. I really feel like the community is confused about that. Um, the second policy that I feel needs clarification is, uh, from the State Board of Education guideline, um, code four point eight oh three, and, Mr. Odom, I did speak with you after the meeting about that one. And that specifically says that no religious belief or non-belief shall be promoted by the school system or its employees. Now, Mr. Odom, at that time, you told me to read, um, further down, and it does say that all students and staff members shall tolerate each other's points of views, which I, which I completely agree, agree with you on. Um, it's just that there's a difference, I believe, between promotion and toleration. And at the last meeting, I don't think we had this, um, this evidence, uh, or this information that came out the next day with the bag that was given to the students with happy EID on it, which is clearly a promotion of their holiday, of their religious holiday. And, I mean, guys, I, I, let's just face it. I mean, if they're promoting their holiday, then may I bring in a Christmas gift bag with Merry Christmas on it and a scripture on it? I mean, that would be fantastic if I could do that. So, to me, they were promoting the holiday. Um, the teacher allowed that to happen in the classroom, and, um, I just feel like this is not about Islam or, or, or whatever religion, Judaism, Buddhism, whatever it is, it's about equal rights, and that is what we're confused about as parents. It, it's an equal right issue. If, if they are allowed to do that, and if they are allowed to get away with that, then I should be allowed to bring in my Christmas gift bag with a scripture in it. I mean, I'd like to thank the Muslim community for, for now we can promote a religious holiday, and that's what it seems like. That's what it seems like. So, in conclusion, I just ask that you just do the right thing and just treat everyone equally. If this wasn't, have courage, have courage to follow the policies that you already have in play. Just, I mean, I'm five foot nothing, and I'm standing here, I feel with more courage of conviction than all of you put together. I'm just a stay-at-home mom, guys, and this is intimidating, but I don't know what you're afraid of. A lawsuit? Bring it on. 'Cause I guarantee this community will rally around you if you stand on principles and values and stand on these things that you already have in play. I, I just, we're desperate, we're desperate for leaders to stand for principles and values, and I ask you to, just to be the leaders that God has called you to be. That is my prayer for you. Thank you for your attention, thank you for your time, thank you for your service and allowing me to speak with you tonight on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Uh, you wanna say anything now, or you wanna?
I can, if you'd like.
It's up to you.
Um, we have met, we have three principals group. We've met with two of those already, staff attorney, myself and all, and we did go over that policy and what it says, uh, dealing with that. I, I think we've got that covered, I hope. We are in the process of planning the training that we talked about. That's being done. That'll be done this summer with groups dealing with, um, religion and state requirements, law and all dealing with that. Uh, the policy tonight, the newspaper reported as a change in our policy, um, well, let me go back, let me go back to the school policy first. Um, when, when schools have their handbook, in that one again, the punishment is not listed, it's you shall not bring or do not do that. The principal then has discretion as to what action they take. It's very similar to what you might do with your child at home. Um, if it's a first violation or something, you may say, go to your room. You may say, hey, I'm gonna take away your TV for five nights. Um, if you've had problems over in the beginning, you may say, you're gonna lose it for three weeks, or something like that. Or if you're really a strict parent, you may say, I'm gonna spank you for this. But principals have to have discretionary powers. Is this a freaking flyer, or is this the first time a child has done something? Um, zero tolerance laws, if it's a zero tolerance offense, there is no discretion. It's zero tolerance. The punishment has to fit and it goes. This toy guns are not a zero tolerance offense. The state, you know, has been contacting since then, they say that's not a zero tolerance offense. So, it goes back to the discretion about how many times or what this child may have done. Now, if the board tonight approves adding to our policy toy weapons or guns or that sort of thing, my plan is to send the parent of this child notifying her personally, we'll get it out to all of our people in the, in the community, parents, personally saying that this has been passed, that toy weapons, guns are not permitted at school. So, we'll follow up with a direct letter for that, for that first, so that they'll know, and then again to all of our parents, but we'll follow up with that.
Any board members?
I've considered waiting until, uh, board discussion at the end. The question that I have is, was there a violation of board policy four point eight zero three? And it's a question that I have asked a couple of times. And I'm concerned about the apparent evidence that Ms. Jennings, uh, has brought that has a distinct identification with the EID, uh, or ED, or whatever the, uh, holiday is. Up until this moment, and I don't have any corroboration of that, uh, I was unaware of that distinction. In my mind, it, uh, it affects the circumstances of this event. I'm not certain at this moment how we would proceed, but it certainly has been, uh, my information that there was not a violation with specific, uh, interest on my part. Was there a violation of four point eight zero three? That we did not have a violation of four point eight zero three. I appreciate the member of the community sharing this information with board.
Um, one of the bags, um, Ms. McLeod saw one of the bags, I saw one of the bags. When the bag was shown to me, that message was not there. Had it been taken out? Can't tell you. It was several days after the fact. I asked Ms. McLeod, was it in the bag when you saw it there? I don't know. I don't know whether that's in one bag, every bag, been taken out of the bag, I don't know for sure. Uh, but I think we have to look and see, again, if, if that's the case, it probably is a violation of that, that policy. And that's why we went out, um, Ms. McLeod went out and spoke with the teacher, the principal and all, to stress what that policy says.
I'm very comfortable that the director of schools has taken the situation very seriously and is active in making sure that the principals and, and our school system, uh, is, are learning from this event. It is difficult to go back and recreate these events and, uh, and understand fully exactly what happened. Again, I thank the member of the community for bringing this to our attention.
Mr. Neifer?
I know, like, uh, Mr. Holliday said, that it is hard to go back and book, uh, at the events and try to, but, uh, going forward, I know you said that we will be training and, uh, educating our teachers and all of that. Certain criteria or certain training could be construed as questionable. Is there any way that the board can see what type of training beforehand?
Ms. McLeod, can you, would you come up and say we use the First Amendment Center or something they wanted, we're talking to with some of this training, and she can tell you basically what they cover in that, that content? And we could, yeah, we can get you a copy of it when they put it together for us.
We certainly can, and we, when we've done it in the past, we have used people from the First Amendment Center who aren't attorneys, um, that, you know, their resources are really good resources for school systems, any public entity really. Uh, we've also used a private attorneys who specialize in that area, um, but no one connected with any particular group or school system, um, you know, would clearly be an independent person. We will try to use the First Amendment Center if we can, it's less expensive, um, you know, and just generally a better resource for us. So, but as soon as we have it booked, we'll have some materials we can share.
Okay. I mean, what I've read and I know outside sources, uh, of some of the newspapers or whatever, had kinda led to the fact that, uh, certain organizations would be coming in to, to train or teach the teachers, instruct the teachers, and that's why I brought it up.
It's not a religious group at all. Um, you know, they basically come in with the principals, and I've been through training even when I was a principal, but we repeat this periodically, um, 'cause we have new administrators and things that are taking place, but they cover what federal statute, constitutional rights of a student, and what state statute requires of us. And, and, uh, we can get you a copy of that. It's, it's, it's not a religious group, it's an independent, apart from it.
No, it's an independent, nonprofit organization, and they provide, we purchased it before, um, a resource manual that we provided to all principals, uh, and it's been several years since we've purchased that, so it probably needs to be updated, but it's a, it's a really good resource.
Sounds great.
We've actually told two principals groups that we've met with already, when we went over this and talked about it, that that training would be coming, so, uh, actually they were glad to, to receive it again. They, there's no, there's no problem with them at all for us doing it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, number seven.
Number seven is facilities. Relocation of Oakland High School boys' basketball locker room. Oakland High School Principal Bill Spurlock has requested permission to relocate the boys' basketball locker room into an adjacent vacant room. The current locker room has twenty lockers and the current basketball team has thirty-eight players, therefore it is necessary. The cost of the project is approximately six thousand dollars and will pay, be paid out of boys' basketball booster club funds at no cost to the board. The Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department and Maintenance Department have reviewed the project and the State Fire Marshal's Office has cleared the project. The motion is to approve relocation and construction of the boys' basketball locker room at Oakland High School at no cost to the board as presented.
Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Tackett. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
B is Blackman High School baseball dugout improvement. Principal Gail Vick has asked permission to make additions to the home and visitor dugout. The additions include a twelve-by-twelve storage area to the visitor dugout and a ten-feet-by-seven-feet-six-inch scorekeeper addition to the home dugout. The improvements will be funded through the Blackman High School Baseball Boosters Club at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. There's no gender equity issue since softball has storage. And the recommended approval, motion to approve construction of storage and scorekeeping addition to the dugouts at Blackman High School baseball field as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holliday, second by Mr. Young. Any discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight. Number eight.
Number eight is a change to the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Rutherford County Schools academic calendar, uh, and it would change from February two thousand fourteen parent teacher conference date. The Rutherford County Schools two thousand thirteen, fourteen calendar dates for parent teacher conferences are set for October and February. The February date needs to be moved to March due to changes in high school grading periods. The March date will provide parents with more academic information to discuss during meetings. Recommend approval, motion to approve the parent teacher conference date changed from February two thousand fourteen to March two thousand fourteen. As I said Tuesday night, this is because high schools will be going to a quarter grading system too, so we'd like to talk to parents after a report card has gone out, so that they can discuss it with the parents. By doing that, we can cover both the elementary, middle and high school by making that switch. Those meetings are after school, they typically start, you know, around three o'clock or whenever a school is out for the parent teacher conferences.
Heard the motion. Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holliday, second by Ms. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine.
Number nine is new and revised policies for the second reading. Policy six point three one two, this is a use of personal communication devices and cellular telephones. The purpose of this revision is to allow students to use personal technology devices for instructional purposes. I might say here for people that are watching or people sitting in our audience tonight, uh, this is called a bring your own device, a policy change. We're piloting routers this spring. Uh, we'll be piloting in schools next year for students to be able to use devices part of an instructional tool. In two thousand fourteen, fifteen, students will be taking the Common Course Assessment online, that's the plans nationally, and so using these devices, this generation of students will live in this world. Much of their training now will be electronic, online, but there's some really good tools and applications for students to use. So, uh, we had to change our policy to even allow that, to incorporate that, but we're approaching it with a, on a pilot basis. Policy six point three one six is suspensions, which is the one I spoke about earlier. The purpose of this revision is to add language to the policy allowing suspensions for possession of toy weapons on school property except for school-sponsored or approved functions. The motion is to approve the revisions of policy six point three one two and six point three one six on second and final reading as recommended by the policy committee. And, and this is a change to the suspension policy. It is not a zero tolerance again, because it does not meet state zero tolerance definitions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Neifer, second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion, Mr. Tackett?
Let me, let me repeat what, uh, I shared, uh, or spoke to on Tuesday evening in our work session. The policy, uh, six point three one six, add language to the policy allowing suspensions for possession and so forth and so on, and so that, that policy still allows for, for discretion. And I'm, and I do wanna respond kinda back at this point in time to what the earlier discussion was, uh, it's so important for teachers, principals, parents, all of us to respond to things in an appropriate fashion. That becomes a very subjective thing, especially when it says allowable, it doesn't say zero tolerance what has to be or not has to be. Not under respond, not over respond. And in those situations, uh, I think you have to weigh intent, I think you have to weigh impact of what's taking place, and if, Mr. Odom, and whether it be a repeat offense, uh, so, you know, I certainly trust Mr. Odom to make decisions on our behalf. Uh, I, we wouldn't have selected him and I, found nothing that would, would make me think that any less of that. I feel like, you know, that was weigh the intent, understanding was, uh, the, the parent and, and I, my understanding is that she apologized and all that, so I'm comfortable with that, uh, impact. I'm not sure that there was a huge impact involved, uh, of the kids and so forth there. Uh, I don't expect it's gonna be a repeat offense, I think we have learned some things from it. I do have kids in school systems, I've got grandchildren in school systems, so I'm very protective of them, and I feel like I have the courage to do what I think is the right thing. Uh, and like I say, I think it's an appropriate response to the way it's been handled, you know, to make that a public statement.
It's very similar to when a policeman stops you on the street, you may get a warning or you may get a ticket. I mean, our whole society is based upon, with exception of zero tolerance, there is a discretionary piece that you have to make a judgment call, and that's what makes it a difficult job, because you have to do those considerations that you're talking about to make that judgment call in this case with that student.
All right, got, uh, motion by Mr. Neifer, second by Mr. Blair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd just like to say something in general, uh, in regards to policies, just for the general public. We basically got, we've got a staff attorney out here, Ms. McLeod, and the board's got attorney Mr. Jeff Reed out here, and I'll, I can stand up here and say, uh, that they, they're always on the lookout for not only our betterment, but also the, the school system. So, uh, it, it's, as a board and, and the staff out here, I think we're always, we always try to be proactive. Uh, this sit, this situation we've, we've had to deal with, uh, it's like Mr. Odom said, I think, last meeting, uh, you'll probably see what we do here, you'll probably see it, uh, the policies we passed up here, you'll see them appear somewhere else within the state. Uh, and I just wanted to, to put that out there, to, uh, a lot of decisions, most decisions that, that are made in regards to stuff like this, uh, is, is something that goes through not only the staff attorney, but school board attorney, and, uh, I just wanna let that be known that, uh, what you say doesn't fall on deaf ears by no means, but, uh, we've got also to have confidence in, in our, uh, legal represent, representation also, so, uh, you know, we may not always agree with, uh, agree with each other on everything, but I can tell you from a board member, I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen to what Mr. Reed has to say, uh, in the big picture, I think he's the one that represents us, so I just wanted to put that out and just, uh, just get that, you know, if you wanna say off my mind, I guess. Mr. Blair?
I, from my perspective, we took ownership, we've been transparent, uh, the director of schools has dealt with it, and, uh, and we've made adjustments, so, I'm, I'm pleased with, with the process and I'm pleased with the result, and, uh, and we're, we're standing up to, uh, to make that happen.
Anybody else on this, this subject? All right, go into general discussion.
Sorry, guys. Uh, something that I, I have not read the twenty-eight hundred pages of the Medical Reform Act that's getting, getting ready to come and kick in here before we know it. Uh, Mr. Sam Big, have, have you read it? Do you know how it's gonna affect us and our employees? And I'm sorry to sting you with that, but, uh...
We are looking at that in the planning stages. Uh, we, it, uh, one of the points that could impact school systems is if you can be subject to, uh, a penalty if your employees, if the cost of their insurance is more than, I think, nine, nine and a half percent, somewhere in there, of their gross pay. Be, at this point, we are fine on that across the board for our employees, and there are some systems that, for their classified staff, do not contribute the same amount as they do to their teaching staff. Those systems are going to have to do some adjusting, but we are fine on that one. The other point we are watching carefully, as long as you work, as long as you're, you know, uh, under thirty hours a week, you are a part-time employee for purposes of that law. So, we, we have been watching and instructing people, if it's a part-time position, don't temporarily increase it to six hours a day, and I, because I'm thinking it's as little as two weeks, and then we would have to offer, offer medical insurance to that employee for the year, but we're, we're looking out for it, we think we're in pretty good shape.
Don't mind me asking, I have another question. If the United States goes over the physical cliff, so to speak, what effect will it have on this school district?
It's, it's probably too early to say. Definitely some of our federal programs, Title II, IDEA, preschool, would be impacted. Uh, it would not be this school year, it would probably be starting October of twenty- It would not be this school year, it would probably be starting October of 2013. So...
Have no ballpark figure?
I don't think, the pieces we've talked about have been those specific federal programs, which the federal money, you can, some of it you can spend over a two-year period. So, what we have budgeted that we can spend in our July through June year, actually can spread over two years, so it's hard to say. I would say potentially two million, but the federal monies vary quite a bit. We don't know what, we haven't heard much on what impact we could see from the state side, and that's the part I don't know.
One more thing, you know? Oh, it's by outside. With all the, with rezoning and all, with all the other issues that we've been dealing with, reacting to, I do not want us to lose sight of the legislative issues that will be kicking in here within a month. And as your liaison to TSBA and pretty much our lobbyists, I'm gonna keep you informed. But, you know, with charter schools and vouchers, you know, taking a front burner approach this year, I believe this board has a unique opportunity to stay in touch and influence our local legislative body, which has some authority and influence, and make sure they're on our side and that we protect the public system. And let it continue to improve and enhance, you know, with Common Core and the Diploma Project and all of the other upgrades that have been made here in the recent past. So, I would hope, Mr. Chairman, that we could get together and send some resolutions to our legislative body and possibly the governor and the speakers and be very vocal in those issues that's gonna affect, you know, our children in public education.
Ms. Michael, can you put that on December again?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holliday?
I just wanted to point out with a very nice representation of the community here tonight, next week, both Tuesday, December the fourth, and Thursday, December the sixth, are very critical meetings for the school board. The meeting on Tuesday will highlight the Stewart's Creek rezoning issue and very likely the finalization of that. But then, the meeting on the sixth is our special call board meeting on the building program, and it's really the opportunity when the board looks toward the future, as much as two to five years out, as to what construction needs may be appropriate for our system. I know as a board member, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Odom, for the preview that we've been given tonight of some of the topics, and we'll be moving toward that. But as members of the community are interested, those are very important meetings to stay aware of.
Also, in regards to it, Mr. Holliday, I'm glad you brought that up. Tuesday meeting will be at 5:30. The first part of that meeting, we're gonna have TSBA president come speak to us, she's requested that, so we'll probably allow thirty minutes or so to interact with her before we actually get into the special call meeting. So, then also, December sixth, the building program meeting, I've asked Ms. Michael to also add on the, add on the agenda, the zoning that took place last night, and we can discuss that, so, the new zone lines and all of that. Anybody else? All minds at ease? We're adjourned.